Hello and welcome to this meeting of the Council of the Town of Oakville. I'm calling the meeting to order. Are there -- Madam Clerk, we have no regrets for this meeting. Counselor, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Madam Clerk, I see none. And that brings this council to our first and only discussion item, the mandatory vaccination policy. There is a presentation from the CAO for your interest. And if you have questions about the confidential material that you received, we can take those questions in camera if you need to. But otherwise, we were under the expectation that that material was self-explanatory and you wouldn't need that, but we can always do that. Madam CAO, the Zoom floor is yours.
Mayor, Members of Council, as you are aware, the province will be requiring that all Ontarians be fully vaccinated in order to access any non-essential businesses by September the 22nd. As well, the Halton Medical Officer of Health has directed all employers with more than 100 employees to put in place a vaccination policy. The recommendation and the report that's in front of you today responds to both of those two directives. COVID-19 is a worldwide pandemic that has been affecting us for more than 18 months. All evidence tells us that being vaccinated and abiding by the health and safety protocols will provide the best protection to staff, our residents, and businesses. There is some urgency for us to move forward now as the fourth wave is upon us in order to make sure that we are taking advantages of all protections that are available. The recommendation to approve a mandatory vaccination policy is essential to moving us forward to a healthy community and not moving us backwards into further lockdowns, which has certainly crippled our economy over the last 18 or 19 months. The recommended policy demonstrates the commitment to the town, of the town, to prioritizing health and safety by taking on every reasonable precaution to eliminate the impact of COVID-19. The policy is based on -- the policy and procedures attached to the staff report are based on public health advice, scientific fact, and evidence. Throughout the pandemic, the town has been committed to meeting its obligations under the Occupational Health and Safety Act and providing a safe working environment both for our employees as well as for the community that we serve. The scope of the policy applies to all of town employees, that being full-time, part-time, students, temporary, contract staff, as well as members of council. Procedures for both of those groups are attached to the staff report. In addition, any individual that's acting on behalf of the town, such as a consultant, a volunteer, or a board member, would also be subject to the policy. Contractors that would work for the town, tenants or leaseholders in many of our facilities, as well as visitors accessing the town's properties, services, events, and programs. With council's approval of the policy, staff will implement the procedures which you have attached to the staff report for both the members of council as well as for staff. And we will begin to implement those with the approval of any vaccination policy. We will then proceed to finalize the procedure for the remaining groups, that being the contractors, for example, other individuals such as consultants and volunteers, as well as visitors that come into the town facilities. Finalization of the policy for visitors, that's the user groups to accessing all of our facilities, is still awaiting the regulations from the province. Their requirements that they set out to be achieved by September the 22nd are supported by the regulations that really contain the details. So we are waiting for that regulation to come out. It will help us and benefit us in terms of finalizing our own procedure so that, one, we can make sure we're consistent with the provincial direction, which is our requirement to be consistent. But it also allows us to look at areas that we may want to be more restrictive in terms of providing access to those non-essential elements of the town. The report does set out our current understanding of the provincial regulations. And it is directed -- the direct impact to town services is our recreational facilities. It's the town's intent to ensure that all our recreation and cultural facilities, as well as our public meeting spaces, such as that town hall, and require that all visitors coming into those facilities must be fully vaccinated. The report also identifies some other precautionary measures that we expect to be putting in place at those facilities so that we can ease the transition into the requirements that would be necessary to meet the provincial requirements. So I would expect that the procedures dealing specifically with visitors coming into our facilities will be finalized before September the 22nd when the provincial requirements kick in. So at that point in time, we will be sending that procedure out to you. As I said, we're waiting for the provincial regulations in order to finalize the procedure. So moving on to the procedure for staff that is attached to your report. The procedure sets out that we will require staff to disclose their vaccination status as of September the 20th. We will be providing accommodations for those employees that obtain a -- that cannot obtain a vaccination due to a human rights code, as well as to medical permissions that are set out in many different areas. And they would be exemptions limited to allergic reactions or heart-related. So they're fairly narrow exemptions under the medical. Excuse me. And then by October the 31st, all staff are to be fully vaccinated. Employees who are non-compliant with this policy will be placed on an unpaid leave, which may subsequently be subject to termination of employment. Until October the 31st, so in this transitionary period between council's consideration of the policy and October the 31st, the town will be supporting staff in order to further their opportunities to get vaccinations. We do provide where necessary time off to get the vaccinations. We will be providing them information about clinics that are available within the Halton region and beyond, and encourage them to check their websites of their home municipalities. We also will be providing them information about the importance of vaccinations, and that is mostly information that's been put together by the Medical Officer of Health at Halton as well as through the province. And in addition, to ensure the safety of the staff that are fully vaccinated that are coming into work during this transitionary period where those who don't have a vaccination have an opportunity to get one, we will be requiring that staff who are not vaccinated come to work with a negative rapid test two or three times a week. And in this transitionary period, the town will be paying the cost of those tests. Beyond October the 31st, we will not be continuing with the rapid test. The best science tells us that vaccination, coupled with all the other health protections, is our best defense. So we won't be providing that opportunity beyond October the 31st. As the mayor had said, the confidential report from the legal department, distributed to you separately, is there providing you advice on the legal implications. And any questions related to that really should be taken in camera. So in conclusion, Mayor, Members of Council, myself, and Members of the Emergency Control Group feel very strongly that we need to take these measures in order to protect our staff, employees of the town, the community, and the businesses within our area. And we recommend that you approve this policy with the full knowledge of the processes and procedures that we're going to be undertaking upon your approval. Again, as we finalize the remaining procedures that implement for the other three groups that I had spoken of, we will be providing those policies to you, or I'm sorry, those procedures to you, so you're aware of the steps that we'll be taking with the other groups. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer questions, as well as there's several Members of staff here that are available as well.
Counsel, I see your electronic hands, and that is an assist to everybody. We have five public delegations as well listed for the meeting. And I'm going to assume that you'd like to take a first round of questions and then hear the delegations. Is that convenient? Is that what you'd like? I'm seeing general assent, so I'm going to go with that. The first, Counselor O'Meara.
Yes, Your Worship, I prefer to go in camera and receive some advice before we hear from staff in a confidential -- sorry, before we hear from delegates. But again, that may just be me, so I'll defer to you on that one.
All right, then let's -- let me phrase the question differently. Would you like an initial round of questions on the public report, or would you like to wait until -- and go in, or would you rather go into camera and then have public questions when you come out? Counselor Adams?
I have a question that I think can be responded to publicly, so I'd be happy to ask the question now.
Right. My only -- my question of you was, did you want to -- anyway, I take that for your answer.
Yes, yes, it's my answer.
You'd like to do the public first. Any objection? All right, Counselor Sandu, Counselor Giddings, and Counselor Adams are the ones whose hands are up. Counselor Sandu.
I will refrain from asking my questions and go in camera. I will defer to Counselor Adams.
All right, Counselor Giddings.
I'm easy either way, Mr. Mayor. I'll leave it up to you.
All right, then we'll go to Counselor Adams.
All right, my simple question is, at least I hope it's simple. For the third-party groups that we have in our facilities, like the hockey groups, the soccer building, I think you alluded to there's another procedure that would kind of apply to our user groups and so forth. When is that going to happen and how will they get that information from the town?
They would also be subject to the regulations that the province has. So we are awaiting the regulations from the province. As soon as they're out, will be out shortly after. But all of that has to occur before September the 22nd. We're in regular discussions with the various sports user groups or any of the user groups, really. So we have had discussions with them on how they are intending to proceed in terms of their own groups so that we can fully understand the implications of how we proceed once we get the regulations from the province.
Great, thanks so much.
Madam CAO, I recollect that your report mentioned that the -- you might have mentioned in your report what the soccer club has already decided to do about vaccination, and also, I think, the hockey club. Do you want to share that?
Certainly.
For those who didn't get a chance to see it.
Yep, both of those are abiding by the policies that the town is applying to its own staff. So we've had, actually, many of the user groups follow the town's lead in terms of the way in which we're proceeding.
Right, so they're, if you like, they're almost ahead of us.
In part, they are, yes.
All right. All right, Counselor O'Meara has moved that we proceed into a closed session for the purpose of receiving -- I have a motion here for you in the case that we needed this. For the purpose of receiving advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, we need a secondar, and that's Counselor Duddick. And is there an objection to the motion? Madam Clerk, there is no objection. The motion carries. And we would now like to move into a session closed to the public for the aforementioned purpose. Welcome back to the public session of this special meeting of the Council of the Town of Oakville. We're ready to hear our public delegations, and I thank everyone for their patience as we zoomed everybody back together. And we're going to start with Mr. Chris Clappam, who is a registered delegation on behalf of QP 1329. Mr. Clappam, welcome to the meeting, and council looks forward to your information.
Good evening.
Good evening. We hear you very well, thank you.
Excellent. Here we are.
And we see you well, too.
Oh, thank you. Hello, Your Worship, Members of Council. My name's Chris Clappam. This evening I am here as the president of QP Local 1329 and the 300 members which I represent today. First, I would like to thank the ECG, HR, and Jane for hard work and commitment with regards to the report and the workplace vaccination policy, with regards to health and -- healthy and safe workplace. Secondly, I just want to clarify and make clear that my comments and my remarks this evening reflect our members of 1329, not all employees. I do recognize, however, that some of the suggestions and recommendations that I have today before you are inclusive of all employees with regards to the policy. I should also mention that I am here to speak specifically to Appendix B with regards to the employees' policy. So with that in mind, I would like to start out by saying that 1329 and QP support a workplace policy, workplace vaccination policy. However, we just do not support this one as it is in front of you. We would like to start by saying that we would like council to consider the timelines that are involved within the policy with regards to next Monday being the date that employees have to fill out their accommodation forms, retrieve the recommended documentation, go through the education materials that were provided, speaking with their medical professionals, and to become vaccinated. The deadline of next Monday in four days is extremely difficult and onerous on the employees to fill out that accommodation form and to get the required documentation that HR is looking for. Secondly, rapid testing, we would like council to strongly consider extending rapid testing indefinitely to all individuals who are not vaccinated. We have seen that the City of Burlington has approved a policy that includes rapid testing up until the end of November. They are going to pay for it. But they have included a policy with regards to rapid testing that extends well beyond November at the cost of their employees and their members. And so for our members, who, you know, I have had consultation with, some of them who are willing to pay for rapid testing beyond Halloween and October 31st and the deadline we have in our policy, I don't understand why a policy in the City of Burlington can be approved and overseen by the Medical Officer of Health in this region, and it is not an option here for our employees to continue to do so after October 31st. We've seen other policies municipalities approve rapid testing as an option, and I would like council to strongly consider including this in the policy as well. Finally, I am speaking on behalf of our members who do not support a policy where an employee is to be terminated or dismissed for any reason with regards to an accommodation, a medical issue, or any other reason. Termination is not an option, and I believe we have an opportunity to look at each and individual case on a case-by-case basis and come up with an accommodation plan for employees and have an alternative work plan for them. We have seen the City of Hamilton approve their policy that does not include dismissal and termination. We have seen a policy from the City of Brampton that also does not include termination and dismissal. In closing, I would like to ask council to amend the policy as it's before you to include these recommendations and suggestions that I have outlined this evening, and ask Human Resources to continue to work with their local unions so that we can have a policy that is inclusive for all staff throughout the organization. I know how much each and all of you, every single one of the council members worked very hard to keep all of our full-time employees employed at the start of COVID with regards to redeployment. I commend you for it. I thank you for it, and I wish to see it continue throughout this policy and beyond as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clappam, for your information. I believe Counselor O'Meara has a question.
Thanks a lot, Chris. And I thank you for doing what you're doing. I know it's not an easy position to be in right now under these circumstances. I have two questions. Firstly, does your union support vaccination of your members?
Through you, Your Worship, yes, our union does support vaccination.
So then my second question is, what is your union doing to ensure that every single one of your eligible members who can be vaccinated is getting vaccinated or getting the information that they need in order to get vaccinated?
Through you, Your Worship, through COVID, we have been working with HR closely during the pandemic to ensure that the proper information with regards to vaccination is reaching our members. We support the fact that HR has provided education materials. I have had discussions with HR about getting the proper education materials out there and allowing our members opportunities to review them. I would like to see that continue with regards to consultation with the union and up until the point, and I know it's been very fast and very hard to get a policy in place. I just don't feel that at this time we were consulted properly with regards to the policy that's in front of you today.
So then having said that, do you feel you would be able to put a firm date on a time when you feel that you would have enough time to educate all of your members? And at that time, if they chose not to get the vaccine, you had done everything you could? And at that point, that mandatory vaccine would be appropriate because you had the time allowed?
Through you, Your Worship, I am not going to support a policy that doesn't potentially look at the option of rapid testing at this time. So even if we are moving the date out, I believe there are other options that the town could consider, and I would be more than happy to explore them with HR.
Well, I appreciate that. I guess it just goes back to my first question. Does the union support vaccination then? And I kind of got two answers there, though.
We absolutely do support vaccination, yes, for the health and safety of the public as well as our members. But having an ultimatum that would potentially result in termination is not something that I can support.
Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Counselor O'Meara. Thank you, Mr. Clappam, for your information.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the next delegate is Peter Nelfel. Could you admit or recognize or enable Mr. Nelfel?
Peter, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
Oh, maybe he's on mute. That's what happens to most of us.
Have you muted your computer, Peter?
All right, we had technical difficulties, and Mr. Nelfel has lost his connection, the internet being the giant success that it is. We'll turn now to our next delegation, Lydia Guzic. Ms. Guzic, welcome to the meeting. Council looks forward to your information. Lydia, you need to unmute yourself perhaps because we're not hearing you.
Hello, Your Worship and counselors. Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. I'm glad to hear you.
Oh, great, great. Just had some troubles there. You know, I really agreed with what they were saying about the indefinite rapid testing. I think that's really fair, and I think the other employees who are vaccinated will feel safe. I am concerned about the vaccinated employees maybe feeling unsafe around the unvaccinated. And there is data out now that if you are double vaccinated and you do get the Delta, which would be probably really rare, you won't get seriously sick or probably not even go into the hospital. Chances of you of maybe having a heart attack or cancer, getting hit by a car, would even be more real. So it's important for me as an unvaccinated employee to know that they're feeling safe. And I wish they would do some more research, or maybe they could be educated in that way, too. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that I'm worried about the hostility between the unvaccinated and the vaccinated people. So I would really like to alleviate that fear between them because it's just creating some hostility, I find. So, you know, with these rallies that's going around, all around Toronto, you know, I just would like to have some medium ground, and I just hope nobody ever gets terminated from their job. And basically, that's just all I had to say.
Thank you very much for bringing your information. We appreciate it.
Oh, and I just wanted to mention, too, that I'm a crossing guard, and I work outside. I wear an N95 mask. I chalk six, like, six feet, so I am so careful. And, you know, it's just ridiculous that somebody would lose their job.
All right. Well, thank you for that additional --
Okay.
Thank you very much for that additional information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next delegation would be Catherine Lessiuk or Lissiuk. Catherine, welcome to the meeting, and I hope you'll help me with your last name.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Thank you.
It asked me to join as a panelist or a host, and I wasn't sure which one to click. So I clicked panelist and it started rebooting the Zoom meeting, so I don't know what happened. But yes, so I sent an email this morning to yourself and your team. I've sent some before. I am very opposed to any mandates, especially when it comes to our health. And when you guys took a break from, you know, took a break to have a private discussion with the legal team, I actually ended up listening to a lawyer named Nicholas Wanzbacher, who is a criminal lawyer. And one thing he did say in his video, that case law is clear. It is an assault on a person to coerce them into an experimental medical treatment where there is no full consent. And right now, there are people who are not taking this experimental injection based on their knowledge, based on their research, based on second, many, many other opinions. And the opinions that are not allowed to be heard from doctors, scientists, immunologists, all over the media, plenty in Canada, Dr. Hoff, Dr. Hodgins, Colvinder Karin Brampton, who got the Ontario Doctor of the Year award in 2018, and now she's being vilified for speaking out against lockdowns, against these experimental injections. Many doctors, and the person who discovered the mRNA, one of the inventors of the mRNA vaccine, he's speaking out. That is never allowed to be heard. All we hear is the same narrative that pushes these injections. There are countries now that have had the highest vaccination rates, like Gibraltar and Israel, and they are having massive outbreaks, not from, from the Delta. Because what happens when you vaccinate a, the majority of the public very fast, a virus mutates. It mutates because it wants to survive. So vaccines actually cause mutations, and this has been proven by any immunologist and scientist who knows about viruses and how they work. Right now, that is being censored, all the information regarding that. So what you guys are doing is illegal. If you mandate this, it's illegal, and you will be charged in the future. There will be employees who will not abide by this mandate because it's coercion and it's criminal. And speaking of testing, based on Genetic Non-Discrimination Act Bill S201, it is an inevitable offense to force anyone to take a DNA RNA test, which at the PCR, rapid tests are, to deny any service, employment, or education opportunity to anyone who refuses to take such a test. The punishment is fine not exceeding a million dollars or imprisonment for term not exceeding five years or both. So both the rapid test, PCR test, and mandated experimental injections are illegal. So you guys have to think about it twice. You can make any, you probably won't listen to this because we know what the narrative is. Are you going to stop after two shots? Are these employees going to have to take a third shot in six months or three months? What about the fourth shot? Israel's already talking about a fourth shot for the Lambda variant. So Delta's already there, Lambda's next, Zeta, Theta. When do you stop? When do you stop the coercion? When do you stop the mandates? To deny people their right to a living, their right to buy groceries, to attend events is illegal. It is immoral. I grew up in a communist country. I've lived in Canada for 40 years. I came where I thought was a free country, and it is not a free country. It is turning into a communist fascist dictatorship based on technocracy, based on digital IDs, digital currency. This is where things are going. You can laugh all you want, Counselor Chisholm and, and anyone else, but you don't see what you're doing to your children, to your grandchildren, into the future of this society. There is no freedom. When you have to go show your ID at a Tim Hortons, that is not freedom. That is tyranny, and that's what you guys are implementing. So I would suggest you think twice before you do because you will be held accountable for that. So that's pretty much all I had to say. You have my email. I made a mistake in the email where, you know, I said, you know, there's been no long-term or no long-term or safety data. There is no long-term medium. We don't know if people are going to get cancer. You don't know if they're going to get blood clots. There's something called a D-dimer. Any one of you who took this vaccine should do a blood test called D-dimer, assuming you took, you know, took it yourselves. And when you do take a D-dimer test, you will see that if it is elevated, it shows that you have microscopic blood clots that are not going to be picked up by a scan. And those microscopic blood clots do cause long-term damage, and the more shots you take, the more damage you do. That's it. I hope you reconsider.
Thank you for your information. Counselor Chisholm and Counselor O'Meara have questions for you, if you have a moment.
Sure.
With all due respect, it's not a question, your worship, but I do not acknowledge threats that are coming across. I'm open to suggestions and debate, but threats don't hold any water with me. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
I'm sorry, when you threaten to fire somebody for not taking an experimental injection, that is a threat. Me saying you will be held accountable is not a threat. That's just saying you will be held legally accountable. If you don't know what a threat is, look in the mirror because that's what you're doing to your employees. That is a threat.
Thank you for your information. Counselor O'Meara?
Thank you, worship. I'm just wondering what medical background you have?
Oh, I'm an electrical engineer. I work for 3M. And, but I've listened to plenty of doctors and scientists. It's called a second opinion, something that was allowed historically. That is science. When you cannot question science, the science, it's not science. It's, it's dogma, it's propaganda. And if there's, have you not heard of plenty of doctors speaking out? You probably haven't because the mainstream hasn't allowed them to be put on. So perhaps you should listen to alternate opinions, see if they're quacks. Doctors who've been in the industry, who've been emerged, who've seen patients, not doctors who are on a high mighty horse who have never seen patients and are actually are probably getting paid by Big Pharma, okay? Like, historically, we've questioned wars that we thought maybe were for oil. Now we're not questioning anything. You're not allowed to question anything? What happened? Why can't we have a live debate between the doctors that are saying you should mandate these and these injections are safe, and the doctors that are saying the opposite? And then we can decide. We're not stupid idiots. We are people who can make informed decisions. And you are not our parent telling us what to do and how to live our lives. And that's why you have to get out of our lives and let, you are, work for us. We don't work for you. We pay your salary. And if people choose to take this vaccine, they can. They choose not to, that should be their right. And if you take that right away, it is no longer a free country. It is a tyrannical regime.
Thank you, worship. That answered my question perfectly.
Thank you for your information, Ms. Lisiuk. Madam Clerk, the next delegation would be Melanie Fernandez. Ms. Fernandez, welcome to the meeting. Council looks forward to your information. And if you haven't already, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. It's delightful to hear your voice. Please.
Thank you. It's lovely.
Council looks forward to your information, and perhaps we'll see your picture soon. I'm not sure if it's not required, but please go ahead. You have the, you have the Zoom floor.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say thanks for the opportunity to speak at this council meeting. I also want to comment on what just happened with regards to this so-called confidential discussion that was closed off to the public. Not sure if I quite understand what that was all about, but this is a public meeting, meaning it's open to the public to participate in. As well, you're all public servants, meaning you serve us, we the people, not the other we're around. Also, the agenda item 3.1 was prior to your so-called confidential item that was 4.1, I believe. So I don't know why you think our time is not valuable to rearrange like that because people do have things to do. They're taking time out of their day to, to, to join in a discussion that we feel we have something to say and hopefully add value. Honestly, I'm really shocked that this is even Canada these days, and I'd like to echo what I believe that was Kathy, Catherine, who spoke earlier, her sentiments. Anyway, what I wanted to talk to you all about was concerning the item 3.1, that is the mandatory vaccination policy that's in the agenda. And my message should really concern each and every one of the members of this council, as well as anyone else who values and respects laws of this land. I'm not here to debate on the subject of the COVID-19 vaccine safety or efficacy, but contrary to the popular notion that these days that only government-approved experts can weigh in on the, the science and the data, the general public do have the knowledge and capacity to discern what is state-sponsored propaganda, which you took time, took the time to disseminate at the beginning of this meeting and throughout, versus the truth, what is good and appropriate to each one of us and our families. We do not look to you for making health decisions for us. That's between an individual and their healthcare provider, not the government. This is clearly politics and not at all concerning health, as far as I'm concerned. Just know that the truth always has a way of coming out and has already begun to come out, and don't even need to look too far. The CDC itself particularly bears vaccine adverse event reporting system. Don't take my word for it. Go look, look at it yourself, and you might be surprised at how safe and effective these so-called vaccines really are. And so where there is risk, there should always, always be a choice in a free and democratic society. So instead, I will remind you that these vaccine mandates that you're trying to implement are simply not lawful, and in fact, they're outright illegal as they actually contravene several of our acts and statutes as well as international law. Firstly, it contravenes our Canadian Constitution and the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, Section 2.2A and Section 7, the Privacy Act, 1996 Ontario Healthcare Consent Act, the Personal Information Protection and Electronic Documents Act of 2000, otherwise known as HIPAA, Personal Health Information Protection Act of 2004, PIPA, Ontario Occupational Health and Safety Act of 1990, Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection Privacy Act, Bill S201, Statutes of Canada 2017, which is an act to prohibit and prevent genetic discrimination. Last but not least, the Nuremberg Code, Article 6, Section 1 and 3. Lastly, I'd like to say that the residents of this town are watching your actions and inactions and keeping account of each and every human rights violation you've inflicted and the suffering you all brought on the good people of this town, and we will hold you personally responsible, separate from the corporation that you represent. Therefore, claiming you were just doing what you were told or allow, or following this person's order or that person's direction and claiming ignorance of the law of the land is not a defense in a criminal proceeding. Also, you should be aware that informed consent cannot exist in the face of coercion, which is what your mandates are aimed at doing, and you will be held to account in a court of law. Thank you for listening to me.
Well, thank you very much for your information. Council appreciates the time you took to give it to us. I will say that council has a right under legislation to go into a session closed to the public for the purpose of receiving legal advice under client solicitor privilege, and council chose to do that. I regret that it was inconvenient to you, and I thank you for sticking around to give us your information. Madam Clerk, the next delegation, I just want to call again in case they've rejoined, would be Elsa Boydin. Is Elsa Boydin with us? No. And Peter Nelfel? Peter is. Mr. Nelfel, welcome to the meeting. Council looks forward to your information. And please unmute yourself if you haven't already.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me this evening. My name is Peter Knopfels. I've worked for the Town Vocal for 20 years now. I've been union president for five, and I am here to address the concerns of our members, which are between 200 and 300, depending on the time of the year. And a lot of these questions have already been raised, so I'm probably going to hit on a few more that you haven't heard. But I think the biggest problem our locals had from day one is that we wanted to be more involved in the development process when it comes to the mandatory vaccinations, and we were not. HR told us what might be coming down the pipe, but we weren't really asked to be part of the decision-making process, and that, that's really provided a problem for our local. It felt like we were told what could be coming, but we weren't asked how we could maybe help roll this out or help soften the blow. So that, that's one point. Number two, there was religious rights and freedoms part of this. We have a few members that really want to look into this a little bit deeper and have it be acknowledged. Number three, the Hospital Workers Union and the Chief Medical Officer of Health have allowed their staff to opt out of mandatory vaccinations and allow the rapid antigen testing. So, like you've heard already, we see no reason why we can't go that route as well, just like our neighbor Burlington is doing the same thing. That part is, is a real sore spot for our members because why could Burlington do something like this but the Town of Oakville doesn't want to? We, I, I take calls, emails, texts constantly from members who are actually breaking down in tears over the phone, and I've almost become a councillor at the same time that I've become union president. And this is really cutting to the core to a lot of our members. We just want a few more options to be out there. We feel they're not there, and I know you've already heard about it. But we, we don't understand where this might even end. For example, if you're going to mandate vaccines, does that mean if boosters are being suggested, you're going to mandate boosters down the road? Down the road for the fall flu season, is council going to take on direction to say, we now want our staff to get the common flu vaccine this season? Where does it end? That's really all I have to bring to the table this evening because most of my questions and concerns have already been addressed or asked.
All right. Thank you very much for bringing your information and for navigating the technical difficulties. We had you connected and then we lost you, so welcome back. We have questions from Counselor Haslett Thiel and Counselor O'Meara, if you have a moment. Counselor Haslett Thiel?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Burton. You mentioned that you would have liked to have been or had suggestions on how you would like this rolled out. Is there any more specifics you would like to share with us that you haven't already shared?
First of all, the timeframes are far too short, and we could have been given far, a lot more notice if this was going to start happening. The other part of the process that the staff can't grasp is how they won't be deemed fully vaccinated after their second shot until 14 days after, and the 31st will be the deadline. So the rapid antigen testing will happen for employees paid for, paid for by the corporation, say, in between the 20th of October until 14 days afterwards. But if you're going to offer that opportunity then and the corporation that pay for it, why not let our members who choose to want to go through the rapid antigen testing on a continual basis, pay for it out of their own pocket? If you're going to offer that in October, why not offer it moving forward as another option to the staff?
So thank you for clarifying your asks. And then in terms of timeframe, can you just confirm when you were notified that this was a possible policy coming into effect?
Late August.
Right, thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor. Counselor O'Meara, your turn.
Thank you, Peter. I'm just wondering, does, does your union support vaccination for its members?
I did hear you ask that question to our sister union earlier. Yes, they do.
So again, is there a deadline that you would give your own union members who are fully eligible, eligible to be vaccinated?
That is not my job to tell them when or how they should get vaccinated. That's not my personal business. QP said they would like their members vaccinated, but it still should be a choice of every QP member, whether they want to get vaccinated or go the route of rapid antigen testing, like other communities that surround Oakville. It's not my job to tell them that they should get vaccinated, shouldn't get vaccinated. Technically, it's not my business. Just because I'm union president, I don't feel it's my role to speak to each one of our members individually and ask them that question.
Sorry, and I just say that because... And I just say that because you did say it's your union's position that you support vaccination, but then it's not your job to try and get your members vaccinated is what you're saying. I'm trying to find out what the union's position is. Either you support vaccination and you're going to try and help your members get vaccinated or it's not your role. I'm trying to figure out which one it is.
QP is our union, but Local 136 is our local. We run it on our own, our own way. Just because I don't have to follow what QP is saying in terms of we would like our members vaccinated, like to see them vaccinated. It's still up to every individual to choose. It's not our role to look at every one of our members and ask them, did you get the shot? Did you get the shot? Why aren't you getting the shot? Is it religious rights and freedoms? Is it a medical issue? That's not our job.
So then with that, then it really doesn't matter what your union stands for in terms of vaccination. It's up to each individual member then?
Put it this way, you and I are not going to agree upon the subject, I can tell already, but this is the route that we're going to be going on our own. In the next few weeks, we're going to be hiring a labor lawyer to find out what the town of Oakville can and can't do if you pass this. We're going outside on our own to hire our own labor lawyer to look into this as well.
No problem, Peter. And listen, I appreciate the position you're in, and I'm not trying to be argumentative here. I'm just trying to get some clarity on, you know, what the position is here. And if there is no position writ large, that's fine. If it's up to each, that's fine. I'm just I'm trying to find out where the lines of responsibility are tracking here. And it's very difficult, as it must be for you as well. So anyway, I appreciate your time here and I understand where you're at. And thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Peter, thank you very much for your time. And Madam Clerk, are there any other delegations? All right, counsel, that ends the delegations. And you may be at a, I think it's time to make a decision, actually. And so I'll look to you for a decision. Counselor Elgar?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Burton. I've read all the reports. I've listened to a lot of different people, not only the people that have been presented to us this evening, but I absolutely do believe that health and safety come first. But the biggest shock I had, and pleasantly pleasant to read, was a statement from the Chief Public Health Officer of Canada on September the 10th. And the statement, there was two important takeaways from that statement. And it said, "The average weekly rate of hospitalized cases in unvaccinated people was 36 times higher compared to fully vaccinated people." That was point number one. Point number two was, "The average weekly rate of new COVID-19 cases in unvaccinated people was 12 times higher than in fully vaccinated people." That, to me, sends a strong message that we, as a council, have to support the motion before us today from our town staff regarding vaccinations. So I would be pleased to move staff report. And I would ask a recorded vote if I can get a second or also. I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Elgar. Counselor Knoll?
I was just offering a second for my colleague's motion.
Thank you for saying it. It makes it official. Counselor O'Meara, your hand is up. Counselor Giddings, your hand is up. Counselor O'Meara and then Counselor Giddings.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'm, you know, I understand the position here. I'm of two minds in the fact that there are a lot of ineligible people, including my children, who cannot get vaccinated. And one common theme I did not hear from a single delegate tonight is, what about the other people in our society? It was me, me, me and my rights and my rights and my rights. And not a single mention was, what's my duty to my next-door neighbor, to my colleagues, to my friends? And, you know, we are all in a social contract here. We will not enact harm on each other in any way. And people's rights stop at other people's rights. And at some point, we, as a government and as a society, have to understand that what we do every single day can impact others. And this pandemic in particular not just impacts others, it can kill and has killed others. And it is that point, and it is a privilege to work in the public sector. It is a privilege. And our public sector workers are the best that there are, and they work diligently and they do incredible things for incredible people. But it is a privilege and we interact with the public. And at that point is where the line is crossed. And with that, Your Honor, I fully support the staff recommendation and Counselor Elgar and Counselor Knoll's motion on this. And I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Giddings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to earlier part of the staff report, staff mentioned that they don't have all the details as yet. I have a couple of concerns in terms of tenants and licensees of town facilities. Just wondering if this will be coming back in terms of the details as well as the provincial regulations prior to September 22nd, whether we'll be calling a special meeting of council for that?
Counselor, the CIO has your answers.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Giddings. The procedures themselves for the three groups that you have not seen yet actually does not come back into council. What we've tried to do on the report is set out our intent and where we will be moving with those other user groups. Once council has approved the policy, then it is up to staff to develop the procedures to put those together. But we will certainly be forwarding them out to you so you know exactly what those requirements are. And I would expect, given that the provincial requirement is coming in by September the 22nd, it has implications on them, that we will do our best to provide that prior to the 22nd. We do need to, I would just add, go through the tenant agreements that we have to see what the requirements are in those in order to also develop that policy. So we're in the process of doing that at this time.
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor. I'd just like to supplement the CIO's answer, if you permit. I just want to remind counsel that within our sphere, counsel is supreme. And if you find fault with the procedure, counsel has the tools to deal with that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I have no doubt. It's just there are a couple of instances that have come up in terms of people with their hockey age playing children. Some of our tenants, they'll have to be vaccinated, will their customers and play equipment at community centers. Just a couple of things that would be helpful if we had details on that. And I will fire that along to the CIO and my council colleagues, just to let them know.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments? Seeing none, may I put the vote? Counselor Grant?
I just want to note that I've been a little disappointed in the process that we've gone through for this. We didn't receive a report until late. And from what we've heard colloquially from our union members, they don't seem to feel like they've had the proper recognition with their concerns. However, we are talking about a public health issue. We are talking about the fact that everybody who interacts with a member of town staff should feel safe, that that member is a safe person to interact with. So as much as I am disappointed with how fast we've done this, how it feels like we haven't really done enough consultation, if not now, then when? And basically, now has to be the time because, as we've seen, we need to interact and deal with this pandemic faster than, you know, than later. So essentially, I am going to support this motion, but I do want to say that in future on issues that shouldn't be but are as divisive as this, I'd really appreciate if we took more time to deal with council, deal with our representatives in the town, and at least take more time to consider it. However, I do understand, again, with this pandemic, there is a speed issue that we need to follow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just to clarify with the mover and secondor, your motion includes a clause to receive the confidential information as well, right? Thank you, both of you. Counselor Haslett Thiel?
Through you, Mayor Burton. Do I have still the opportunity procedurally to ask one question of the CIO?
Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. There's been some suggestion about the need for greater consultation and whether they had been, if their viewpoint had been considered or suggestions considered. As I read the report, I understand that it's the intention of the corporation to work from passing of this, if it passes tonight, to the final date, to find and support as best as possible, education as well as time to vaccinate. Will there be any further discussion about accommodation? Or can you give us at least a bit of clarity around the termination provision? And in other words, you know, I think there might be a perception that it's, you know, a certain date comes along and you could very well be out the door the next day. Is there, in the procedures you're working on, going to be some discussion about how that lays out? And let's hope it doesn't come to that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The accommodation, we will certainly be working with staff on the accommodation. It is in limited range, but we will work. We are looking for them to disclose that on the 20th so that we have some time to work through that with them. So that will definitely happen. In terms of your second question, I would flag that all of the town's policies are subject to dismissal if they're noncompliant. So this is not an unusual thing relative to policies. The town sets policies in terms of the requirements that they expect employees to be abiding to, and where they don't abide to them, it could result in termination. We did specifically mention it in this policy because we thought it was important to make sure that that was clear. But as you say, at this point in time, we're looking at an unpaid leave of absence. We're going to work with those employees as much as we can to move them towards vaccination. So we're not going to move immediately to termination, absolutely not. So we'll look for every opportunity we can to move to a vaccination. And at some point, it will need to end. And so that's why the wording is in the policy.
Thank you for providing me with that clarification. And I too will be supporting my council colleague's motion.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, perhaps now I can put the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a recorded vote? The way we'll do this, counsel, is the clerk will call your name and you will say yes or you will say no. Please don't show us the extent of your vocabulary. Other words can easily be confused for assent and dissent. There's a pair, like yea and nay. So please, yes and no are the valid ways to answer this roll call. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Adams?
Yes?
Counselor Chisholm?
Yes?
Counselor Deddick?
Yes?
Counselor Elgar?
Yes?
Counselor Giddings?
Yes?
Counselor Grant?
Yes?
Counselor Haslett Thiel?
Yes?
Counselor Knoll?
Yes?
Counselor Lyschina?
Yes?
Counselor Longo?
Yes?
Counselor O'Meara?
Yes?
Counselor Parmar?
Yes?
Counselor Robertson?
Yes?
Counselor Sandu?
Yes?
Mayor Burton?
Yes. All right, counsel, you've made a decision and you made it unanimously. Thank you for that. The next thing we need is the consideration and reading of bylaws. We need a mover and secondor for the confirmatory bylaw. Counselor Grant, thank you. And Counselor Lyschina, thank you. Is there any objection? Madam Clerk, I see no objection. The confirmatory bylaw is carried. Counselor Haslett Thiel, you have a hand up. Is there something you'd like to add to the meeting?
So, Mayor, if we are through that part of the agenda, is it possible to ask for waiving of procedures for the short motion that we, Counselor Giddings and I, put forward?
We were planning to do that at the Planning and Development Council meeting, if we ever get there.
All right. Thanks very much.
But I will recommend it at the time. Thank you, everybody, for your time and attention and your hard work on this big decision. And that ends our meeting.